Hello and welcome to the Pittsburgh City Council Standing Committees Meeting for February 12th, 2020. My name is Chris Dodson and with us today is Amanda Fisher, our Sign Language Interpreter. City Council will discuss the following legislation for preliminary vote. Finance and Law, Mr. Lavell is the Chair. Deferred Papers, Bill Number 2020-0022, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code at Title II Fiscal, Article 7 Business Related Taxes, Chapter 241, Amusement Tax, Section 241.01, Definitions to Update Language in City Code. Bill Number 2020-0067, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Precise Discovery LLC, 429 Fourth Avenue, Second Floor, Pittsburgh, PA, 15219, in an Amount Not to Exceed $3,814.40 for Professional Services in Connection with Billboard Litigation. New Papers, Bill Number 2020-0091, An Ordinance Providing Funding for the City of Pittsburgh's Parks Trust Fund through a .50 mil increase to the Property Tax Rate by Adding Section 263 dash, I mean 263.04, City of Pittsburgh Park Trust Fund Levy at Title II Fiscal, Article 9, Property Taxes, Chapter 263, Real Property Tax and Exemption. Public Works Committee, Mr. Coghill is the Chair. New Papers, Bill Number 2020-0088, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 816, Effective December 18th, 2015, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2016 Capital Budget and the 2016 Community Development Block Grant Program and Approving the 2016 through 2021 Capital Improvement Program by Increasing the Federal Funding Allocation for Bike Infrastructure by $73,886.40. Bill Number 2020-0089, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 386, Effective June 19th, 2019, entitled, Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works to Enter Into an Agreement or Agreements or the Use of Existing Agreements between the City of Pittsburgh and Peshak Plus MTR for the Professional Landscape Architectural Services for Southside Phase One Design at a Cost Not to Exceed $338,096 by Increasing the Total Allocation to $400,000. Urban Recreation Committee, Reverend Burgess is the Chair. New Papers, Bill Number 2020-0086, Resolution Authorizing the Director of the Department of Parks and Recreation and/or the Director of the Department of Public Safety and Director of the Office of Management and Budget to Enter Into Agreements in Individual Amounts of $10,000 or Less with Performers, Instructors, Artists, Referees, and Persons with Specialized Skills in Connection with the Department's Recreational and Instructional Program and Special Event Services. Bill Number 2020-0087, Resolution Providing for an Agreement or Agreements, Leases and/or Lease Agreements for the Use of Certain Property for Senior Facilities for the Provision of Center Services to Seniors in an Amount Not to Exceed $87,010, Chargeable to and Payable from the Senior Seniors Community Program Trust Fund and the Department of Public Parks and Recreation. This concludes our reading for February 12th, 2020. Thank you and have a good day.
Good morning and welcome to today's Standing Committee Meeting for Wednesday, February 12th, 2020. Our first order of business is public comment. Any Speaker wishing to comment before City Council has three minutes to speak. The green light will indicate the start of your three minutes. The yellow light indicates you have one minute and the red light indicates your time is up. Will the first Speaker please come to the podium and please state your name and neighborhood for the record?
Hi, Pittsburgh City Council, Stormy. Mira Montez, Bonne Boulevard Apartments, Shadyside. My neighbor flooded my apartment and it smells like urine and for the last two months, Delta Property Management has been taking my rent but not addressing the issue. Monday, February 3rd, I filed a complaint with the Pittsburgh Health Department and followed up Friday and Mr. Mitchell told me that my complaint was closed Monday. I said, "How can you open and close a complaint within one day and not investigated?" He said, "Well, urine is not really a health issue, it's a smell issue, so you have to call the Air Quality Department." I don't even know what that is. So I hung up and called back and asked for a supervisor. Lori said that she would look into it and call me back. About two hours later, I called back and got the answer in service. And my thing is, I don't understand how the Pittsburgh Public Health Department can shut down an honest business owner in Bloomfield because he does not have an expensive refrigerator, but a urine-stained department is not a health issue. I called the mayor's 311 system and filed a complaint against the Health Department and Delta Property Management. I filed a complaint with the Building Inspector and Mr. Shearer has not called me back yet. Chris from the Health Department called me Friday late and promised to reopen my case and I have not received anything. Just recently, I had to call the police to Delta Property Management because a frustrated tenant smashed in the glass security door. And I don't understand why the Health Department can pick and choose which cases they want to handle but open and close somebody else's case without even telling us that the joke is on me. Thank you.
Thank you. Will the next Speaker please come, step to the podium? Next Speaker, please.
My name is Yvonne F. Brown. Yesterday, I had brought, I had, it was, it was some flowers and it had a little white owl in it, but it was for Valentine's Day and I had brought it to tell you that the double tree, you have 7-Eleven, well, there's a woman that makes these vases. It's really beautiful. And you know what I'm really mad about? I went back there because I had Denise to put it up. It's gone. Do you have thieves in it? Ms. Harris is gone. So who stole it? It don't make any sense that if you're just grown people and stuff disappear like that, you should be held accountable. I paid $20 for that. Now, they have some that is a heart with red roses, pink roses, and that was 15. I mean, they're beautiful and I wanted to bring them because you have somebody that's a female, a woman that might start a little business with that. We're supposed to be helping each other. Now, I also want to say this, that I have said years and years, because my son would be 53 now, Tony, when he was going to school, that I didn't think that my black child had to sit next to a white child in order to learn, but yes, here in this Pittsburgh City, Pittsburgh School District, it is, because we have terrible schools in our black areas, but we have some good schools in your white. Now, I'll say this, Squirrel Hill, my little grandbabies go to COFAX. Now, look at this. I was going to bring this before Christmas, the six-year-old one, the darkest one, the tallest one, made this. Now, isn't that beautiful? Do you see how she learned how to make this? And the little five-year-old one has a little friend, she says her name, I think her name is June, but I pronounce it wrong. But anyway, this little girl comes from China and this five-year-old is saying, "I want to go to China." You see, you can open a child's mind whereas Mr. Burgess will say that she had no business coming in here, but she knows how this place is run and she knows that she should be able to speak, because I taught her that. She's been watching from, from a small child. I have a picture of her crying once when Mr. Kraus was hauling at me, turned around, Ms. Brown, and they said, "Ooh, she's hauling, he's hauling that grandma." And I'll bring the picture next week so you'll see. And the baby was terrified. Now, she comes here and she gets talked about like a dog at five years old. From a baby, she watched how you run this city council. And I want you to understand, I myself feel that if you can't listen to us, then you need to be, all of you be impeached, just like they trying to do, well, not trying to do, because that snake, that snake, Trump, he's the head snake, and all them other snakes ran in there and they let him go. I'm sorry.
Next, next Speaker, please. Next Speaker. Seeing no more Speakers, we will now move on to our Standing Committee Agenda. Will the Clerk please take the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Here.
Ms. Grace.
Here.
Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
President Kail Smith.
Here.
Mrs. Strausberger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. Lavell.
Here.
Eight Members present.
First Committee of the Day is Finance and Law, Chair by myself, Bill 22.
Bill 22, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code at Title II Fiscal, Article 7 Business Related Taxes, Amusement Tax, Definitions to Update the Language in the City Code.
Motion to Approve Very Brief Discussion. Thank you very much. Met again with Director Lanier yesterday, the different Attorneys working on the project, our Budget Director, Bill Urbanick, and a number of other people were very close to resolving it. I appreciate the Council's indulgence for one more week and we're hoping that by next Wednesday, we'll bring back a completed bill for approval. So with that, I'd like to motion for a one-week hold, please.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, bill is held one week. Bill 67.
Bill 67, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Precise Discovery LLC in an Amount Not to Exceed $3,814.40 for Professional Services in Connection with Billboard Litigation.
Motion to Approve.
Second.
Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, bill passes. Bill 91.
Bill 91, An Ordinance Providing for Funding of the City of Pittsburgh's Park Trust Fund through a .50 mil increase to the Property Tax Rate by Adding Section 263.04, City of Pittsburgh Parks Trust Fund Levy at Title II Fiscal, Article 9, Property Taxes, Chapter 263, Real Property Tax and Exemption.
Motion to Hold for Public Hearing.
Second.
Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Bill is held. Any opposed? Sorry. Bill is held for a public hearing. Moving on to invoices, I need a motion to approve.
Motion to Approve.
Second.
Brief discussion. I need a motion to delete the, under City Council, the membership to connect as the Council President has not actually signed for that yet.
Motion to delete a membership to connect for 6891.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Any other discussion on the invoices? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Invoices are passed. No interdepartmental transfers. We do have P cards for approval. Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? P cards are approved. Next is the Public Works Committee chaired by Mr. Coghill, Bill 88.
Bill 88, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 816 by Increasing the Federal Funding Allocation for Bike Infrastructure by $73,886.40.
Motion to Approve.
Second.
Any discussion? None? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill passes. Bill 89.
Bill 89, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 386, which authorized the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works to Enter Into an Agreement between the City and Peshak Plus MTR for Professional Landscape Architectural Services for Southside Park Phase One Design by Increasing the Total Allocation to $400,000.
Yes, please.
Motion to Approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, bill passes. Next, we have the Urban Recreation Committee chaired by Reverend Burgess. First Paper is Bill 86.
Bill 86, Resolution Authorizing the Director of the Department of Parks and Recreation and the Director of the Department of Public Safety and the Director of the Office of Management and Budget to Enter Into an Agreement with Individual Amounts of $10,000 or Less with Performers, Instructors, Artists, Referees, and Persons with Specialized Skills in Connection with the Department's Recreational and Instructional Programs and Special Event Services.
Motion to Approve with discussion.
Second.
Yes, we ask that the Director of Parks please come forward.
Either way.
And your guests, and I'll bring them up really for both bills.
Morning Director. How are you? At the same time. You want to read both?
I think we can do one at a time, that's fine. So let's, if you start with your names and I'll say some initial comments.
Luanne Hiram, Assistant Director of the Senior Program for Parks and Rec.
Good morning, Council. Ross Chapman, Director of Parks and Rec.
So this is your first time here since I have been named to this Committee Chair. I did not ask to be the Chair of this Committee. This was assigned to me by the President and I am willing to serve. But since I have was named the Chair of this Committee, I do intend to liaison and lead Council in all areas concerning parks. Again, it was not my ask, I was chosen, but I do believe in leadership. And so I will lead this discussion moving forward on how parks are going to be rehabbed, how parks are going to be implemented. Certainly, I invite everyone to have their opinions and we'll have a fulsome discussion, but I will attempt to lead. And I want to make that perfectly clear. It is my committee, it is my responsibility, and I absolutely intend to provide leadership in this area. And so let's talk about the bill that's in front of us. We have a bill. It is a revolving bill, we have to have it every year, about the performers and all the people who make the parks special.
Yes.
Good morning, everyone. Yes, so longstanding agreement in place that allows us to be able to provide kind of vendor services for artists, instructors, consultants, those kinds of things. And largely, they're primarily in our tennis instructors. We had an agreement with someone assigned to the baseball program. So we don't use them a lot, but it allows us to engage those individuals that we really couldn't practically RFP or RFQ for their services. And it's been an agreement that's been in the department we've used for some time now.
Yes. Almost 20 years we've used it.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, bill passes. Bill 87.
Bill 87, Resolution Providing for an Agreement for the Use of Certain Property for Senior Facilities for the Provision of Center Services to Seniors in an Amount Not to Exceed $87,010 and Chargeable to and Payable from the Senior's Community Program Trust Fund and the Department of Parks and Recreation.
To approve.
Second.
Gross?
Thank you. I hate to do this, but it's about senior centers and I'm alarmed that I just got an email this morning that the Morningside Healthy Active Living Center has closed until further notice. Could you please illuminate us?
Yeah, so the legislation's respective to ongoing lease agreements that we have for three centers, the newest one being the Morningside Senior Center. We lease that through CMS Housing as a property manager. And some of you may not know, but it's also a senior residence affordable housing complex, a rental scenario. So there's, I think there's 46 units attached to the space that we lease. So we pay a nominal user fee to be there. Public Works pays the utilities for the space. Several months ago, it was determined that some of the floor tile in this space were kind of popping up. We, all of this, our lease agreement is just specific to the space. We don't have agreements with the contractors or subcontractors. Further investigation resulted in some discovery that some of the, there's an issue with the flooring. So I think we closed the center for two days, about two and a half weeks ago, while they removed the warming kitchen. They did some site assessment. It looks like the flooring issue is a little worse than we thought, so we made the determination to close the center until it's figured out. So there's a number of parties involved, the contractor, the flooring subcontractor, the building owner, the building management company. So we thought it was in the best interest of our seniors to close the center as of this morning.
So this is disappointing, just a little context. So this is the center that moved out of the Natoli Field House where it had been for...
For quite some time.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not sure I remember right, the beginning of time there, so. And it was one of the big reasons that Council supported the mayor moved forward to Lytec, which is where you get a full 9%. One of the very few that the state gives the city to create affordable housing in the former Morningside School. And so that housing is built, is occupied, there's always a waiting list, that part's successful, but it was part of the program that we would also get, and you probably would remember the testimony, I think it was under Director Griffin when he was here, that we were going to get this bonus, brand-new Healthy Active Living Center. But I think we need to be mindful these days, so much is being built so quickly that not all of the quality is as it should be. And we hear these concerns from within the neighborhoods and lots of new construction buildings. So I hope that you keep us posted. What, how long do you anticipate this, these corrections to take?
We, they had started, I can't tell you how many onsite meetings there's been with Luanne and I and a lot of, a lot of assistance and guidance from Chris's team and Public Works and Facilities. We're not sure. I don't think it's going to be a matter of weeks, I think it's going to be a matter of months.
Okay, well, I'll just, I'll just leave it there, but I'll ask if Councilman Burgess would, you know, like to help with the situation and provide some leadership. That would be wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Any other discussion? Councilman Burgess.
Talk to me, I went, actually drove past the Morningside building. It's gorgeous.
This is.
It's a gorgeous remodeled facility. I'm curious, just a little bit, to talk, since we just brought it up, I've been looking into that model. Tell me, get a chance to kind of brag about, tell me the benefits of having that facility and in a, in a senior residential facility versus being in a standalone facility. Tell me the benefits of the...
Well, one of the, let me say that one of the benefits that we found is that I believe it houses 43 residents that live in the other side. And the benefit of that is that they're able just to walk right over and use our facility. So that in itself is a really good model that we found, that they can come into our facility and use it, don't have to worry about weather, don't worry about, you know, coming on, weather slips and falls, and it's been really a great model for us with attendance.
Has it increased?
Yes, it has increased, yes. Quite a bit, yes.
I think even upon, or during the project work, when the, when the school was being converted into the center and the new addition was being built that houses the seniors and the rental units, I think we saw an uptick even just during that project phase. And once we opened the facility about a year ago, maybe a little bit longer than a year ago, approximately a year ago, our membership increased, I don't want to say by 50%, but significantly, just by having those seniors not have to manage transportation. It's new, there's a fitness room inside, so it is the sparkling gem and hopefully the flooring issue can soon be rectified and remedied, but it's...
Does it increase the reimbursements that you received? Does it, did it increase?
Yes, I mean, any...
Does it increase the reimbursements that the city gets, which is based on attendance?
Correct. Well, not so much, yes, on attendance, you're right, Councilwoman. The more we can activate seniors and motivate them to participate in programs other than, you know, something that's more sedentary, that increases our performance allocation from the county. So it's a, it's a tiered structure, these things are, it's all measurable, there's a lot of data, the metrics that are shared with the county, but we can optimize our contract that we have with the county every time we can provide a program that, so that helped us for sure.
So, I was going to ask you this privately, but it just happened, you just happened to be here and it just happened to come up. And so you would then support multiplying this model?
Absolutely.
In various neighborhoods in the city?
Absolutely.
All right, that's my question. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Seeing none, bill passes.
Thank you, thanks very much.
We're just holding the other one for a public hearing, the park tax rate?
Yes. We have exhausted our agenda. I do have a few meeting announcements. Cablecast Public Hearing is scheduled next Tuesday, February 18th at 1:30 on Bill 35 as it relates to a liquor license transfer for Known 950 Penn LLC. And next Wednesday, February 19th, Council will hold a Cablecast Public Hearing at 1:00 PM on Bills 2307 and 29, 30, and 31, as they all relate to historic designations. And at 2:00 PM on the 19th, there's a Cablecast Public Hearing on Bills 31 as it relates to zoning changes for UPMC Southside. Comment from Members? I saw Councilman O'Connor, then Councilman Kraus.
I'm sorry, good.
No, I just, everybody knows that paid sick leave is going to be rolled out in March. We're getting a lot of questions about it, so I was going to call for a post-agenda, a Cablecast post-agenda on paid sick leave. We'll invite the mayor's office because they're rolling it out in the next couple of weeks.
Sure, second.
Favor?
Aye.
Post-agenda will be scheduled.
Thank you.
Councilman Kraus?
Thank you. Just, and Madam President, as it relates to the public hearing on the UPMC facility next Wednesday at 2:00, I'd like to chair that if I may, please.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Burgess?
I want to call for a post-agenda on the Parks Plan. I introduced legislation yesterday. I intend to hold it for a post-agenda, but I'll call for it today so we can schedule it and everything can be done in order, so.
Madam Clerk, did we not schedule a...
Can we get a second?
Wait, did we just schedule a post-agenda on the Parks Plan?
Public hearing.
Public hearing and post-agenda, I thought we scheduled.
It was only called for a public hearing.
It's just a public hearing, Council.
Okay. I just want to make sure.
We have two public hearings scheduled, one on the trust fund and then the second one on the mileage rate. And now there's a, he's gone for a separate post-agenda on the actual plan itself.
Right.
I did see a second.
Discussion, too.
I've been thinking about the plan and the, so the Parks Conservancy Plan, we know is based on a lot of metrics is the vocabulary that they always use. I would love to see the data set, right? So the actual full data set. And I don't know if that's something Madam Clerk can get for us, if Councilman, we've, you know, the kind of glossy brochure has been presented publicly and that version is on the website, but I always like to see the raw data myself, so thank you.
Thank you.
Was it me or you, Trace?
As always, Ms.
I just wanted to ask, for this post-agenda, can we request that the people who did the surveys of the 25 or 26 parks to be here?
At the discretion of Councilman Burgess, but I don't see why you couldn't.
Thank you, thank you.
Just tell me exactly what you want. I don't, oh, yeah.
The people who did the survey, you know, for the Parks Conservancy.
So can I add some clarity?
Sure.
I think we are on the same thing on this one. I'd like to know if we can invite the people who also had received funding, the organizations that, that pushed this and supported this agenda. We know that there are a lot of them and I, it's my understanding, some received some funding, so we'd like to know about the PAC funds and we'd like to make sure that we can get some information on those, from those organizations, where they got additional money. Because it's my understanding there was private dollars to, went to those organizations who turned around and pushed it in the communities. So I'd like to work with you on that because I want to make sure that we're drawing public light onto...
light onto where the funding, where the actual dollars came from for this plan and to push this forward. I think we, the public needs to know what exactly was done, so they know next time something like this comes up, they know who's actually behind pushing some of this.
So, I'll tell you my intentions, and then we can just dovetail. My focus will be on explaining how the park plan was designed, what the data set is, what the implications of it is, the actual plan itself. I have no problem forwarding a request to Jane Miller or to whoever is the appropriate party for other extended conversations. I think council has certainly, when we're here, we have the right and the ability to have those conversations, and I'll be supportive of that investigation. And so, just kind of let me know as I design it, I think we may have to design it in phases, where the first phase is actually a discussion of the plan itself, and then maybe a second phase that goes into the motivation behind it and all the other ancillary information that council needs to have.
So, I'd thank you, because I can, can, may I? I just want to say, real quickly, that my ultimate goal is to find out where, who funded this campaign and where the money came from, and I want the public to know that. But I think that I overall have concerns, what we're doing with nonprofits in the city of Pittsburgh, and we see a lot of them coming down here pitching for the affordable housing, yet they say they're not going to get any money, next thing you know, they're getting contracts to do some work around that stuff. You see people coming and saying that they're, you know, pushing for the parks, they're not receiving any money, next thing we find out that they had received some grant money to push for that agenda. So, I think a lot of times, the public is misled by people that they trust, and a lot of these nonprofits and a lot of organizations that we're starting to see, some of the executive directors are making exorbitant amounts of money, and sometimes they're coming to us saying that how much they need money to help the community and finding out that later that they have a huge budget that they could have easily helped and didn't help the public. So, there's a lot of things that have been coming to light, you know, with me, and I think I'll be talking more about some of those organizations publicly, because I think the public needs to know what's going on with their tax dollars. And this is one of those things, that when people come to us and they say that they want us to push for something, and the public hears the outcry and the need, and then they vote for it, or then they in turn contact us, they need to know really what's behind some of this, because we always, can't always say what it is publicly, because sometimes it's just, you know, we might think something. So, whether it's part of this agenda, or whether it's part of some other investigations that we start asking for and calling for and looking into and doing our own digging, or ask for outside help, one way or the other, it's going to happen. That's all I'm going to say.
Since we're in this interrogative, I'll say, I think, I want to make my intentions real clear, so there's no misunderstanding, I am not advocating to give money to any organization, that is not my, is not my plan or purpose. That may occur, that'll occur, that is not my concern of outside organizations getting money. My concern is how the money is spent, that's my interest, my interest. And so, this is not, and my advocacy for the plan has nothing to do with any outside organization or lobbying or promoting any outside organization getting any dollars at all, that is not my intention. My intention is solely narrowly focused on how the money is spent. I have sat at this council, and I have watched so-called progressives who say they're progressives, or even lauded as progressives, except when it comes time for diversity issues, right? We had a former colleague who was on this, 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 was here, and supposedly a progressive, but every time an issue for African-American came up, they voted against it, they voted against the high rise in Homewood. Who votes against senior elderly, African-Americans in Homewood? They voted against the Housing Opportunity Fund. They funded, they voted against ShotSpotter, which was this, which is, the police say is arguably the single most effective tool to reduce homicide in the city of Pittsburgh. They voted against choice neighborhoods, which is, the mayor says, the highlight of his administration, probably the single best example of inclusive affordable housing in Pittsburgh. This so-called progressives, this darling of the progressive, was progressive, except when it came to issues of African-Americans, and then they were absolutely hostile. And so, I want to, I want to, I'm unwilling to allow that kind of hypocrisy to go forward. And so, when people vote against equity and diversity, I'm going to point it out, I will not be silent anymore about it, and I'll point out the hypocrisy. So, my issue is not, it is not on giving outside organizations money. What I am saying is that it has to be, that equity has to be at the core of it, and I'm going to argue that, I'm going to debate that, and so, I'm going to lay the plan, I'm not saying, and we, I am not against, I am not against negotiation and discussion, I am against backroom deals, because in my experience, unfortunately, backroom deals, when it comes to African-Americans, we get shut out. And so, on issues of diversity, I will not make backroom deals or secret conversations or splitting up money among council people, because I know what that means. That means that the people I care about, the communities I represent, we'll get shut out, and so, I won't do that. It will happen, I promise you, my conversations will be here at the table, on camera, out loud, so that whatever we do, the impact of it to our residents are crystal clear, and that's my promise. And so, I'm going to have a very transparent, very public conversation about what I believe, as you said earlier, I didn't pick this committee, I didn't ask for, I didn't even know I was on the committee until the day I was installed, I had no, swearing in, I had no idea. But if I'm, but when you, but she put, oh, she asked me to do this, if you ask me to do something, I'll do what I'm asked to do, and I will lead on this issue.
So, I asked you to work with Councilman Kail Smith, so I'll keep that in mind, too, okay? But I do want to say that I hear where you're coming from, I hear what your concerns are, you know, you and I have had this discussion. But for me, the bigger picture is, this not, I do care about how the funding is going to be spent, but I think it's important to know how the funding came about, to know before we start making those decisions, and to know that there were no poor people pitching in for this campaign, there were no poor people saying that, hey, I want to be taxed, and there were no people struggling financially who are on, you know, waiting for, on tax payment plans, whatever, pushing for this plan, and there's no seniors that were waiting for medication, who are deciding between medication and taxes, who said, hey, let me pay for this plan. So, I think it's important to know who exactly was behind this plan, what kind of money was behind this plan, and to know that there's a lot of wealthy people making decisions for a lot of poor people in this city, and I think that it's really important for us to have this conversation about who's funding what, what's going on with some of these nonprofits and organizations in the city of Pittsburgh, and what are we doing to contribute to some of the things that may be detrimental to our residents or not in the best interest of our residents. When I think about our public safety is now struggling to pay, the mayor is struggling on the police contract, when I think of things that we're struggling to do with our buildings and our facilities, and what DPW struggles with the equipment that firefighters are struggling with, somebody was telling me that they had equipment that was a mobile unit in another state, that when a senior person or somebody refuses to go to the doctors but clearly needs help, they bring a mobile unit with X-ray machines and everything, right, we can't afford something like that in the city of Pittsburgh. So, if we were going to raise taxes, I think the public, had they had the choice, would they rather raise it for public safety purposes, children, and doing programs within our city, after school programs, early childcare? I think that they would rather have, if they had actually known real details and who was behind what, and what the real implications, and how the dollars would actually really be spent, they would probably would have not have chosen parks as number one, as the number one reason, I mean, especially knowing that our parks, as much as we love them, are rated number twenty-three in the country, twenty-three in the country, and we painted this picture as if they were deplorable and had so many problems. I mean, our DPW crews have done an amazing job with a very small budget, keeping our parks updated and in wonderful shape, but somebody decided that an organization needed more money, and the way that they communicated with us this week, I thought was an insult to council, sending certified letters to us, so I think that council is going, if it were me, I want to be honest with you, I wouldn't even collect a dime of that tax. I'd form the account, because that's what the public voted for, but I would not collect a dime of that money, because I think that we need to send a message that this is not the way we're going to do business in the city of Pittsburgh, and it is not the way we want our residents treated, and we don't want them misguided, misled in any way for things, because who's going to stop UPMC if they decide, and do we know if any of their money went into this? So, let's, I mean, I think that we need to ask some of these questions, did they maybe not give it directly to this organization, but maybe they gave it to some of the organizations pushing for it? And so, I'd like to look into some of those things, too. So, we'll get a list of some of those things, we'll look at their nine-nineties, their federal documents, and we'll start going, that's what we did when we had an organization in the West End that was, spent five million dollars of development money, and didn't, we didn't see any development really occurring in the West End, and we started looking after them, we looked at their nine-nineties and took it apart, and the IRS finally took some action. So, you know, we reported to the FBI, the IRS, the Attorney General, US Attorney, I mean, anybody and anybody who would listen to us, because we knew something was wrong. And so, I think that it's time we go down this path with some of these organizations that are misleading our public, in my opinion.
There was a request to, there was a request to have the data here when we had the discussion about how the parks were rated, I was just wondering, on your bill, was there an attachment? I thought I saw like an attachment for the tables.
Yes, there's an attachment, but I think they want a more detailed, there's also, so although there's not in the legislation, there is also some more evaluative stuff, there's equity, some kind of equity effect estimate. So, what I would do is get as much information as I can from the Parks Conservancy and distribute it as soon as I can to all members of council, so that at least the information I have, we all have the same information at the same time and can, and can move forward together.
All right, great, thanks, because it was good to see those underlying documents on how that was scored.
Everything that I can find, I'll, again, I want it to be very transparent, so if anything I can find, I'll send out.
All right, good. Thank you. I would also just ask, and I know we can pull this data, that we also pulled the data of where the votes actually came for and against the actual proposal, because I think that'll also be pretty enlightening for council members to see. With that being said, Councilman Connor?
No, I just wanted to add, as Councilwoman Kail Smith said, you know, we put that bill on the table a couple of weeks ago, you know, in many conversations that we've had, we decided to break it down and start from scratch. I will say it was very disappointing, Rev, that you put that bill on the table yesterday, or you introduced that bill, to me, that goes against everything we were talking about. So, I have a lot of questions about, you know, how the money they raised, as Councilwoman Kail Smith says, and how they went about it. Transparency, I'm all for it, I want to have that debate right here at the table, forget about closed doors, Rev, if you're not willing to work with me behind closed doors on it, that's fine, we'll just have it out here at the table.
So, if I can, so, when you and Councilwoman Gross introduced your legislation, although it was in my committee, I have never said a word about that, that is your right as a councilperson, to introduce legislation on your, on your, on your behalf, I think that's the inherent right of a councilperson. So, I was not disappointed for you exercising what I believe is your right as a councilperson. I am somewhat surprised that you're disappointed in me for doing the same thing that you did and not recognizing that as a right of a councilperson, it's simply, it's some, all of us have the right to introduce legislation at any time, and I think to, and I think that's an inherent right as a councilperson, and that's one I've exercised, I will continue to exercise, you've exercised, and I think it's right, I think it's healthy, I think every councilperson, that does not, introducing legislation does not stop other conversations, in fact, sometimes they add in conversation. And so, I would push back a little bit to say, is my belief in an open, and I've, you may not, I've been saying this over the years, I really believe in an open, transparent exchange of ideas, and so, and at other times, I've, in fact, I rarely, I rarely, and those who've been here a long time, and clerk will tell you, I rarely even put my legislation on the calendar, on the agenda, I rarely do that, I, this is how I operate, have operated, bill will tell you the same thing, right, this is what I do. I fix problems as far as, or I introduce legislation that I think will fix problems, or sometimes just have conversations. And so, it was not meant to be in any way slighting you, it's just this is how I function, and so, this is consistent with what I've always done, will always do moving forward. So, I'll just, I'll use this public time to explain kind of how I work, I lay things on the table and then move from there, that's sort of my way.
Thank you. With that being said, we actually still need to vote on actually having the post-agenda, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Post-agenda will be scheduled. With that, I need a motion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
No movement.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.